Is that what was expected, six?
I had not heard from Zach announcing here.
Alright. Okay, then I'll go ahead and start Planning Commissions, Sebastopol Planning Commission meeting of March 9th, 2021. And like to ask for a call to order and then we'll call please.
Thank you. I will do the real call. Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Commissioner Lindenbusch.
Here.
Commissioner Ottinger.
Here.
Commissioner How.
Here.
Vice Chair Fitz.
Here.
Chair Fernandez.
Here.
And Commissioner Dutch is not here.
Okay. Okay, so six in attendance satisfies quorum. Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of January 26th of 2021. And then February 9th, 2021, we'll take them one at a time. So we'll start with the January 26 minutes and ask for if any commissioners have any additions or changes. Okay, Vice Chair Fitz.
Yeah, on page six. Middle of the page where my quote is, I think it's supposed to read, "Do the arena allocations have to impact this in any way, not us?"
Thank you.
And then also on page 12. I'm not quite sure what this is supposed to be, but this is actually your quote, Carrie, sort of the top of the page. It says, "We know we have a lot of park medians." Which I don't know, I didn't know we had a lot of median.
Let me get down on the wrong seven minutes.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that's supposed to be, but it doesn't, didn't read right, whatever it was.
I believe that's actually needs, that we have a lot of needs.
That makes sense, yes. So that's all I had on the, on that set of minutes, the 26th.
Alright, any other changes or additions to the minutes of January 26? Okay, alright, or ask for a motion for approval?
I move we approve the minutes of January 26.
That was.
A nice second.
With those amendments.
Good.
Alright, and then we'll do a roll vote, is that so?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Here, I mean, yes.
Commissioner How?
I abstain because I was not present for that meeting.
Alright, thank you. Commissioner Lindenbusch.
Aye.
Commissioner Ottinger.
Aye.
Vice Chair Fitz.
Aye.
And Chair Fernandez.
Aye. Okay. Now we'll move on to minutes of February 9th, 2021. And Vice Chair Fitz, I guess you had some changes on that one?
I do have the ball. On page 12. First, actually, two things, top of the page, my, my quote. The second line, I think it's supposed to, instead of relying on, I think it's supposed to be re-aligning the creek. And then further down, this is Carrie's quote. She lines up from the bottom, it says, "The next grant cycle will begin in February 2022, and the award will be, I think it's supposed to be granted and not graded."
Yes, thank you, that is correct.
And then. Let's see. There's a quote of mine on page 19. And I don't know what it's supposed to say, but what it said doesn't make a lot of sense. I was gonna try to go back and look at the video today and didn't get a chance, but.
Oh, is that the first full paragraph?
Yeah, the first full paragraph, the second sentence is, "I do not exactly understand, next year, outdoor showers might be nicer than indoor showers." I don't know what that's supposed to say, or what I said, but I don't think I said, "Next year, outdoor showers might be nicer than indoor showers." I mean, I guess the point I was just trying to make was that, you know, I personally was, you know, wanting to, you know, push the money towards the pathway improvements in lieu of the showers, if that's, you know.
Correct, yeah.
So I just want that to.
Yeah, I think my understanding of that is, well, I'm sure, and it might just be simple as changing that to while, because I think what you were saying is, well, outdoor showers might be nicer than indoors, is it worth the cost savings, the cost of the project?
Yeah, so. I'm not sure about the next year whole thing.
Yeah.
So yeah, why don't we just take off the, "I do not..."
You could take out that whole sentence fragment on that line and, "Yeah, our showers might be, but is it worth the cost?"
Yeah, that, that sounds good.
Yeah.
That gets my point across. That was it, my comment.
Any other changes for February 9th minutes? Alright, ask for a real call for those.
We need a motion in a second, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think we did one. Thank you. I'll get a hang of this eventually.
I'll approve the minutes of February 8th.
Okay, the second made, and now a real call.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Commissioner Kelly?
Yep, yep.
Commissioner Lindenbusch?
Abstain.
Commissioner How?
Yes.
Commissioner Ottinger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitz?
Yes.
And Chair Fernandez?
Yes.
Alright, so that passes 5011.
Okay. And moving on to item number four, this is comments from the public on items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to make, anyone from public would like to make a comment, items not on the agenda, give you three minutes to do so, and ask that you either raise your virtual hand or your real hand, and Carrie will recognize you.
Chair Fernandez, I'm looking through the gallery and the chat, and I don't, and actually, Sam, I believe, if you see anything in the chat, let me know, but I do not see any hands raised or other indications.
Yeah, I don't see anything myself. Okay, alright, so I'll go ahead and close public comments and move on to statements of conflicts of interest here for tonight. Any commissioners have any statement conflict of interest? Okay. Moving on, item number six, informational report presentation. And I'll go ahead, we have a co-housing presentation of Tom Kuhn and Michael Jacob. I want to welcome them here, serve the Planning Commission with Michael, and appreciated that. Appreciate your knowledge and you guys being here. And fast, Carrie, go ahead and bring us up to date on what this is about.
Sure, so this is a presentation on co-housing, which is a pretty unique housing model that we have in Sebastopol, as well as some other communities, you know, Berkeley has a couple of these types, and I'm sure part of that will be part of the presentation tonight. This is actually the first of a few, it's called a spring lecture series in a way, a few presentations on different housing models and from types of housing through funding that actually Kate How has helped us put together, contacting these speakers, and we'll have a couple of presentations coming up. I see we do have a number of folks in the audience here for this presentation today, I suspect. And so we will try to get a list of those on the website soon, so you can see what they all are. But very pleased to have Tom Kuhn and Michael Jacob here tonight. Kate, I don't know if you want to say a few words at all?
Just like to welcome our presenters tonight, and I look forward to hearing your presentation. And I will reserve my questions until after you've given us your presentation and presented your material. Thank you so much for taking the time for being with us tonight.
Thanks for having us. It looks like Michael's not here yet. I've just sent him a text, so hopefully he'll get it. He might have been thinking we wouldn't be on till 7:30. Any rate, my part of the presentation is first, and if he doesn't make it in time, I'll wing it. Okay, so let me, let me go to sharing, let's see. Share screen. And. Okay, can you see my slide? Co-housing for Sebastopol Planning Commission, is that up?
No.
Uh, I think I'm sharing.
You're not.
Alright, well, let me, let me try again.
Just so you know, Michael has just generated.
Yeah, I see him there, okay. Oh, I didn't hit this button here. How's that? Now you can probably see it.
There we go, yep.
Alright, I missed one button. Okay. Just gonna try and make this full screen. There we go. Alright, so. So yeah, we're here to present on co-housing, and first thing I just wanted to mention was that, you know, neither Michael nor I are experts or consultants on co-housing. We just have a lot of experience with it here and happen to live here in Sebastopol. And of course, Michael served on the Planning Commission, as somebody mentioned recently. So hopefully, we have a good perspective on the kinds of things you want to know. And so we're gonna go through these slides and expect to have plenty of time for, for Q and A at the end. So we're kind of ask you to hold questions if you could till, till the end, and then we'll go through that. So first of all, what is co-housing? I'm just gonna give you guys a chance to read this, so you don't have to listen to me drone on. Okay, so those are just a couple of the common definitions of it. Here's a photo of where we live here at Two Acre Wood, we're on Robinson Road, in case you don't know. As the previous slide mentions, homes clustered around common space, so this is our plaza here. Just to the right, that corner sticking out is part of our common house. And then if, from this point of view, you did a 180, you would see the other half of the community down below. We'll talk a little bit more about some of the key elements next. So we have, as we say, shared spaces. Homes are typically clustered away from parking. So there are some architectural features that promote co-housing, promote community, whether or not there's co-housing, thought to promote community. One is having parking removed, so that people get to see their neighbors walking by all the time, and they're more likely to have casual interactions going to and from their cars. Typically, they're self-governed. Typically, co-housing does not have shared common beliefs. By that, we mean they're not religious in nature. There are, of course, religious communities. They're not really considered co-housing, although there is a lot of overlap in how they work. Shared communal and environmental values at the beginning are inspirational, but this doesn't mean there's no conflict. And I kind of want to emphasize that it doesn't mean there's no conflict, because, well, we'll get into that a little bit more. But an analogy I like to tell people is that, you know, it took me a long time to find a life partner and, and someone with whom I feel I share a lot of values, and yet, of course, there's still conflict, and we worked through it, and hopefully come out stronger, and so far, that's been true. And, and here at Two Acre Wood, you know, we have 14 households, and we didn't work quite as hard to select each other as we did our life partners. And so, yeah, there's certainly some, some opportunity for conflict there. No shared economic connections with neighbors. By this, we mean there's no sharing of income, as is common. My understanding is that's common on kibbutzes in Israel, or originally, I'm not sure it still is, and certain communes. But typically, co-housing does not have that, although we here at Two Acre Wood have a homeowners association. Of course, we have HOA dues like any other. So we do have that economic connection, but it's, it's not the same as, you know, sharing income. Typically, a non-hierarchical structure employing consensus decision-making model is common. So the consensus part is really important. It's not majority. So one person can hold up a decision, and this is what forces interaction and community and, of course, conflict. So, so that's, that's a really, thought to be a really important part of it. Typically, co-housing is structured as an HOA with either condo ownership agreement or fee simple ownership deeds. Here's another shot of Two Acre Wood, just sort of a small plaza we have down at the other end of the property, where some people gathered. Obviously, this is after the pandemic started. This musical family here is giving a little bit of music to the rest of us, while others are standing and sitting aside and listening.
That was Denise's 65th birthday.
Oops.
I was celebrating the dragon.
Let me go back up there. What was that, Michael? Oh, that was at the Denise's birthday, yeah, yeah. I wasn't there that day, I don't know what I was doing, so I missed it. Okay. So a brief history of co-housing in the U.S. Of course, co-op apartments were in New York City going way back. Chuck Dorat and Katie McCammon brought the concept from Denmark, which started there in the 60s. And the first new co-housing community was Mira Commons in Davis, California. And Davis had another community kind of come together in the 80s, N Street. And that was just done by single-family homes removing the fences behind their yards. So today, there's about 160 completed co-housing neighborhoods in 25 states, with 125, 150 in some stage of construction or development. We're gonna talk a little bit about the steps next, but it just, there are a lot of steps, and, you know, I would say it's a fair bet that not all of those 125 to 150 will come to fruition. It's a lot of work and a lot of effort. So it's, it's just important to recognize that. Oh, one thing I forgot to mention on the second bullet, Chuck Dorat and Katie McCammon, I think they both consulted on Petaluma Avenue Homes here in Sebastopol, which is an affordable co-housing rental community built by Satellite Affordable Housing Associates in 2009, if I'm not mistaken. Okay, so here are, this is per cohousing.org, the steps to creating co-housing. And they actually give, you know, if you go to that website, they give a description for each of these. And you can see there's a lot of steps here, and as I mentioned below, the underlined items are typically needed for any non-co-housing development. So any commercial developer will, you know, need to manage and do all of these things that are underlined, but co-housing have these extra steps. So forming a group and deciding as a group what to do, and growing that to the number of people you needed, and establishing the relationships, and bolstering those relationships, and working through all the conflict, even before you've done some of the things like hired a contractor. That can be very difficult, and in those early stages, our community did have a lot of turnover. So we'll probably, Michael will probably get into that a little bit more later. Let me see here, is there anything else? Yeah, okay. Typically, co-housing communities are future resident-driven developments who hire professionals. That's what we did here at Two Acre Wood. Michael's gonna talk a little bit more about those details. Less common is a developer-driven development, which is what Sequoia Village is here in Sebastopol, was done by Burbank Housing. I was working as a project manager at Burbank Housing during construction and managed the project during construction phase at Sequoia Village. Also. Sebastopol Petaluma Avenue Homes was built by a developer, of course, Satellite Affordable Housing Associates, as I mentioned, that's rental housing. And Yalupa Co-Housing in Santa Rosa was also done by a developer. Oh, I should mention, oh, I was gonna mention it in the next slide, let's see here. Yeah, so, whoops, did I? Did I skip something here? I'm gonna back up. There was supposed to be a picture here, I thought. Oh, it's the next one. Sorry. Back, back up here. So we're gonna talk through a little bit of the details of Sequoia Village and Two Acre Wood. I'm gonna talk about Sequoia Village, and Michael's gonna talk about Two Acre Wood. At Sequoia Village was formed, it was initiated by a partnership between Michael Black, who's an architect and a very strong proponent of co-housing, and here in Sonoma County, by the city of Sebastopol and Burbank Housing, in order to create affordable co-housing community. Burbank did this as a self-help construction project, and managed the construction and, as well as the design and entitlements and all of that. There is an HOA there with fee simple deed ownership of lots, including an equal share of the common property. And that community, when Burbank sold the homes, was established, or was set up with a property management company to handle the property management by Burbank Housing. The reason that's mentioned specifically here is, we'll probably, we may get into this, well, I'll get into it a little bit here now. There are a number of reasons why co-housing communities sometimes, I don't have a better word for it, fizzle out, where even after everybody moves in, things sort of stop happening and people stop sharing meals together and doing many of the things that are very common in co-housing. And there's probably a lot of reasons why. I've certainly done no studies. Every co-housing community is different, and, you know, there's probably as many reasons why people participate and not, or not, as there are people. But if you kind of have a critical mass of people not participating, they have a tendency to fizzle. And one of the things that kind of is a forcing factor, I believe, and this is just my opinion, is having a self-managed HOA, which is what Two Acre Wood has. And I believe Sequoia Village is still using a property management company, but I haven't really kept in touch with their, there may be others in the audience who know. But, and then another factor that can lend support to co-housing actually happening is having some of that community space and common building or a kitchen where people can share meals. We know of communities that don't have that, that have kind of fizzled out. And then also, it's, it is, I think, probably very difficult to sustain a vigorous co-housing community in a rental property, because people just don't have the investment typically. So I don't, I've, I've heard only rumors that the Petaluma Avenue Homes, there isn't that much in the way of co-housing community happening. I could be wrong about that, or things may have changed. I heard that many years ago, so I don't know how that's going now. Okay, so here's a picture of us at Two Acre Wood when we first moved in, or, yeah, probably when we very first moved in. You can see this woman here is pregnant, and that child is now, is gonna turn 22 later this year. So this is, is a pretty old photo. It's notable that there's very little turnover in Two Acre Wood. There are 14 households. Only three of those 14 are not of the original owners. So, so it's pretty small turnover for over 20 years to have only three houses turnover. The other thing I was gonna point out is, here in white, seated toward the left of the picture, is Michael Black. He also was the architect for this community and lived here early, in the early years. And he left here because he had an opportunity to move in at Yalupa Co-Housing, where he was also involved. I mentioned him earlier, he was also involved with Sequoia Village and several other co-housing communities throughout the state. I know he's involved in one in Chico as well. Let's see, yeah, I think that is it. Okay, so at this point, I'm gonna hand it over to Michael to talk about Two Acre Wood and some of the other things for the rest of the slides. And Michael, just let me know when you want me to flip to the next one.
Okay. As Tom mentioned, Two Acre Wood was a resident-driven development. My wife Denise and I got involved in 1994, and it took a couple of years before we were able to sign a option agreement on the two acres that are here on Robinson Road. And I think we closed it like on Halloween in 1996. And I, I think that the. The lay of the land is not that different 20 years ago than it is now. There's not a lot of open properties in town, which you do a co-housing development of, of our size. And at 14 homes, Two Acre Wood is on the small side. I think that average of the 150 or 200 communities that are in the United States is probably closer to 25 or even 30 homes. And that, that's just not gonna happen here in, in Sebastopol. Doesn't mean that you're not gonna have an effective community, but it does, it is a factor. And it took us then three, almost three years between the time that we closed on an option to be able to get entitlements through the town. Richard Spittler was working with us at first, before Kenyon took over halfway through our project. And go back one if you would, and, yeah, thanks. And so at the time, the way that this project moved forward is we used the planned community, the PC zoning on this property. At the time, I think it was already zoned as a six lot per acre. Probably back then, it was like an R3 or an R2, I don't remember exactly. And because there was low-income provisions to be able to get another lot per acre, if you did a deed restricted situation, we worked with Burbank Housing and aided two of our lots as deed restricted low-income. And at the time, of course, there was redevelopment funds through the city before the state yanked all that away. But that was very helpful to get us up to seven per acre, which allowed us to have 14, 14 families move in. And again, we, we did do a fee simple zero lot line. So it's pretty vanilla in terms of how we structured it with the Department of Real Estate, with an HOA and CCNRs, and we wanted it to look as normal as possible for the lenders. It was new, you know, there weren't that many projects around. And we, you know, we were not a hippie commune. We were a bunch of middle-class folks looking to just have a more collective lifestyle in an intentional neighborhood. in an intentional neighborhood. And as you, I don't know, we didn't put a site plan on here, did we? Yeah. But, you know, as Tom mentioned earlier, the parking, which is pretty common for multifamily, the parking is separate. And there is kind of a joke, but it's real, that when you leave your house to go, to get in your car to go somewhere, you better factor in five or 10 extra minutes because often stopped on the way to your car and have these impromptu conversations. The other thing about the design of the, of the site is it was a, is all the homes' kitchens face out, so that if you're in your kitchen, you're looking out. And if people are walking by, they can see you. And it does help foster that bit of, of social interaction and social connection. You know, we wished that this was five acres. Well, actually, we wished it was 100 acres because the 100-acre wood was the inspiration of Two Acre Wood. But 100 acres was definitely not going to happen. Can you give me the next? So, as Tom mentioned, we're a self-managed homeowner association. And I think the benefit of living in a small community is being to manage your, your community and your affairs and not, we still delegate, but we're not delegating out to some management company. And often, we're looking for what is the social glue that holds a community together, that makes it more interesting and more, and foster commitment and connection. And so, the business of operating a small development is part of that. Let's see. What we did about the PC zoning, it's something that has actually been around for a while when the J Plan was aided and, I don't know if that was anything that was changed. And I was, I think it was fortunate that we had that ability to work with that 20 years ago under the prior general plan and zoning ordinances. So, we were able to create what worked for us on this long, narrow lot. There's, we don't have a plan to show you, but if many of you have come by our community, you'd know that there's duplex, triplex townhomes. So, we share one or two walls with our neighbors. And we, as much as possible, we created our side yard setbacks to be relatively small also, just to give us as much community space as possible. And so, there is a small wooded area in the back, and a large community space in the center next door, which is the plot big garden. And a lot of the trees and whatnot that we have in our landscaping occurs on pathway leading up through the, through the buildings. Give the next slide. So, because you're the planning commission, we thought we would mention just briefly a little bit about the general plan and the zoning code, at least as far as I remember it from when I was on the planning commission. So, the general plan does include mention and support of cohousing in the, in the housing section. The town was wanting to make sure that the city supported community developments like cohousing, and it was, it's mentioned specifically. And as I said, the zoning code has PUD, a PC zoning, which I think is very helpful when it comes to something like this. And one thing that I suggest is the, the design review board has a, has design guidelines. And I haven't looked at those in an awful long time, but it would be interesting to see if they have or could include community or cohousing site design ideas incorporated into them. And I know that in talking with Kenyon in the past, that if someone comes in saying they'd like to develop, whether it's a single-family or a duplex, let alone a larger development, that they say, you know, there are design guidelines that can help you see what it is that, that the city of Sebastopol encourages. And so, I think it would be helpful to include what is in, is included in the, in the zoning code, such as the PC zoning, in a hand as well, so that someone who is, you know, an architect or a developer looking to create some type of community development is helped along the way. You don't have to read through the entire zoning code to figure out what might benefit And then the next slide. Tom, the next slide is the, is just a few things that I wanted to mention in terms of having the planning commission and the city council support the future development, more community, more, more cohousing. And as you know, we're a tough town to develop in. There, as I said, there's limited availability of appropriate parcels. Construction has been, cost of construction has been high, and it's only getting more difficult all the time, definitely with the fires in the last three or four years. That's made it even more difficult. And, and when it comes to building multifamily, even in areas where it's zone multifamily, there is, at least our experience was here on Robinson Road. And in the parcel that we're considering purchasing that we didn't get before we bought this one, neighborhood resistance to multifamily is pretty strong in town. And so, it's important to be able to look at ways to diffuse that. The next slide. So, I think this is our last bit of talking points before we open it up for questions. There was a, there was a request, I think the city paid for a certain, for a feasibility study to be done in some city-owned parking lot land in the middle of town. It was right south of Hot Monk. And I don't think that ever moved forward. But I think that in terms of looking at possible approaches to creating more communities, to me, mixed use, especially if the city already owns the one. And the downtown core is a viable option if it can get through the, the steps that it takes, you know, expecting there's going to be a lot of resistance to change. But in the zoning code right now, there's four-story, if there's residential in downtown core. So, there's a lot of room for a denser downtown to incorporate more residential, and that could have community built into it. I think that that definitely in bigger cities around the country, there's been, there's been successful communities built that, that, you know, don't look like Two Acre Wood. And this last one, I know is probably the least likely, but I just thought I'd throw it out there, is when we were developing Two Acre Wood, we really wanted that larger parcel where we would cluster homes in a small piece of it and then have a lot of open space around it. And that is never going to happen in the county, but it could conceivably happen if some properties that are in the sphere of influence now were incorporated into the city and there was reasonable access to city services, where you could have a dense community, but based on the size of it, the density of homes per acre might fit the zoning. It's possible. I know it's something we looked at and didn't really find. So, Tom, if you have anything else to add, I think that kind of wraps up our, our discussion. I hope that we hit some of the topics that you were interested in. And of course, you know, it's available for as long as you want to talk about this more. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Michael, thank you for, for being here. I missed you being on the, on the commission.
Thank you.
Questions for either of our presenters?
Yeah, thanks to both of you. It's nice to see you, Tom and Michael. But yeah, I had some questions. I'm just wondering if you could speak a little bit to, you mentioned kind of neighborhood opposition and things like that. I'm just wondering if you could speak maybe a little bit to your, you know, things that you ran into through your entitlement process that either neighborhood opposition sort of things, or if there was anything that you felt the city could have done better to make it easier to make it, you know, get through that process?
Well, I know when we, we looked at a parcel at the High Point of Jewel Avenue back in 97, and at the time, it was a five-acre lot with a farmhouse on it. And it was zoned medium-density residential, I think. At the time, it was zoned like at least six slots to the acre, maybe even a little higher. It would have been, could have been six to eight or six to 10. I don't really remember. But I know that in the middle of doing that, working with the city council, they were, they were probably influenced, I'm sure, by the, some of the neighbors, but they actually reduced the density right in the middle of our, our tentative application. We didn't really even get so far as, as to do that because it wouldn't have worked if we couldn't gotten at least six parcels, six, six units per acre. And so, you know, I think there's a, there's a different willingness, I believe, in the, in the planning commission council now. I think it's just politically is different 20 years ago. But, but I do think that in seeing how developers have, have struggled to put anything together in town that isn't just a single, you know, a single-family residence or maybe a duplex, anything larger than that is met with a huge amount of resistance. And, and I think that our experience of, of building multifamily has been positive for the residents to live in it. And I believe if you look at the past people around Robinson Road in our area, they would also say they weren't too clear and they, they were nervous at first. But I think feel that Two Acre Wood is a benefit to the community, not just the larger, you know, town, but, but our individual little neighborhood. So, I, I'm not quite sure how to address that, but, but I think that multifamily can be, can be seen as a benefit, not just it's bringing down property values to those that have a single-family residence who didn't strike a bit.
Yeah, I was kind of curious, I asked you about that as well. Just, I was kind of curious what your neighbors think of you, you know, 20 years later, if they realized you weren't as scary as they thought you might have been.
Right. You know, we're, we made an agreement with the town not to let our, our community space be used as a, as a rental and as a gathering. But when it, but we are, we do open it up for things like postcard writing and, you know, parties. And we've definitely had a number of gatherings around here that support our local street and neighborhood, and people appreciate that.
Sequoia Village, I wasn't involved with the project during entitlement, so I didn't get to witness much of the opposition. But I did have to go back. We, we ended up selling those homes right after the 2008 crash of property values. And so, I did have to go back to city council to request some changes to the financial assistance from the city, which, which was granted, which is great. But somebody got up to speak in support, and they said, you know, and by that time, Sequoia Village was, for the most part, built out. It wasn't completely done, but it was nearly done, and people hadn't moved in yet. And this person got up and spoke and said, you know, I spoke against the project, you know, a year or two ago, whenever it was. But now that I see it and I've met some of the families, I, I really think it's a good thing, and I'm really glad it's here. And, you know, so he, he kind of retracted his statement. That was just one anecdote, but.
Yeah. One other thought I wanted to mention was both Sonoma and Napa and American Canyon have, have put in income projects on city land. In fact, American Canyon did one, a homeless community that opened two years ago on about three acres. And it was, I think Chuck Duret, McCamden Duret, they were the architects on that one. And the, the American Canyon had land, and they put it out as RFP, and they got like 28 developers to fit it. And they picked that one, and I've seen it, not in person, but I've seen photos of it. It's really nice. And we know that there's a huge demand, huge need for meeting A-BAG goals for low and, very low and moderate income housing. And of course, there's a huge demand for homeless, you know, transitional housing, which is what that was. So, you know, we're not quite in the same, you know, we don't, we don't have quite the opportunity because we don't have the open, open fields, greenfield.
Do you feel that there's any, like, there's some cost benefit to this kind of development versus, you know, a non-cohousing arrangement?
Well, I think that cohousing probably costs a little more per square foot than a comparable-sized project that would be developer-driven as a condo or townhouse, partly because in a small townhouse development of 14 units, you wouldn't see a 2,200-square-foot common house. It wouldn't do that. So, we're amortizing that in. And there's a lot more, there's a lot more space that's just community space that you probably wouldn't see. And I haven't done a recent look, but I think some of our homes are probably larger, and we've got more unit types than you'd normally see. There's four unit types of Two Acre Wood in just 14 homes, and a developer probably wouldn't do that. On the other hand, if you look at the resale value, we are higher per square foot resale values than a comparable townhouse or condo product. So, it fizzles out because of that.
Do you think that the, you mentioned, you know, you could only get, you know, 14 units on your two acres. Do you think there's a, I know there's definitely a cost analysis would have to be done, but just in terms of the community side, like, what would be kind of the minimum number of units you'd want to, you know, expect to see in a cohousing development to make the community aspect work well?
I bet Tom had a different idea about that than I do. Do you want to give your shot at it?
Well, yeah, I don't know. I'm not sure what your answer is. But, you know, I think we're, we're close to the low end. I would want to say, you know, 10 maybe? It, it depends a lot on the commitment of the people, you know? If it were a community similar to Two Acre Wood, where the future owners are the ones doing the development, that would be a sure sign of strong commitment, and that would feel better if it, and so, I'd feel more comfortable, you know, going smaller that way. Bigger would be better, however, and because then you're more likely to have that core of, you know, totally committed folks that would be involved. And, yeah, of course, there's always economies of scales. You go larger. I'm sure there's a top end. I don't know what it is. And, yeah, of course, there's always economies of scales. You go larger. I'm sure there's a top end. I don't know what it is. So. Yeah.
Well, our campus called co-housing in Oakland, I think has six homes on a very small, small lot. And they actually even have a common house, too. So socially, it's easy when there's more people because a couple of families pull away because love happened. There's less to make that mix of of interaction. And with one or two, it's a small group. Then it's more difficult, but there's thirty, of course. It's a lot easier, which is more energy, more, you know, more people that can do more things. But I don't think size is a limiting factor. It could be small, it could be medium.
Yeah, I I would agree. In any group of households at any given time, you know, there's a certain number of them that are going through some kind of a crisis, right? We've had deaths, we've had divorces and we've had, you know, long term illness and people get older and so on and so forth. And when those things happen, people aren't able to participate as fully. And you, if you have a larger group, you can kind of absorb that and think, okay, you know, well, the the Smiths or maybe they've got this going on and they can't do anything for, you can't do much in the next year or two. But, you know, we know they contributed a lot back in early years and probably they'll come back around once they get through, you know, whatever this is. So there's there's that kind of thing to consider, too. If you have six households and, you know, even one of them is going through, say, a divorce, that could be, you know, pretty difficult on the whole community.
My last question, had you, Michael, you mentioned, you know, the idea of a downtown, you know, co-housing, these kind of projects. How would you see something like that coming together? I mean, do you see like the city trying to actively do that with a developer? Or do you see it would be better if a group of people came together to propose something to that? Have any thinking about how just that, with that idea like that forward?
Well, I I think that because you have this ability to build vertically in the downtown core, whether it's on bare dirt, like a parking lot that the city already owns, where the city could put an RFP out, or it's a property that has a building already, but maybe there's some extra land next to it. You know, I know the downtown charter campus. That was an opportunity, but it's still possible in my mind where a you could build a podium and park underneath it and go up four floors and create something on a site like that. And that would be, it wouldn't be a public private partnership because it would be all done privately. But if the if the town, if the city had had a real strong interest in supporting it, of course, that would be helpful. You know, because there are, there's parking issues and plenty of other things that the city could do to support a development like that, because it would be pretty difficult to make it work financially. And I think especially for a senior complex where the parking is already reduced, if it was a senior project, I think that, you know, that could have some legs if there were people that were committed to be able to do that. We're becoming senior pro housing just because we've all aged to that age. We didn't start that way.
Well, mo- most of us, not all.
Well, right, you will never get old. But we have three new families that just moved in that are, I think, forty and under, so that's great. It makes a difference.
How did you find the initial, the original families? How did you all come together for this?
People brought in people. We put out a lot of, we put the word out just in circles and we got quite a bit of free publicity in some of the local papers. And there were a lot of people swirling around. It was, it was sort of like a whirlpool. People would swirl into the middle and would either find the gravity kept them there or they had too much magical thinking going on and thought they could, you know, get a house without being able to afford it. Or the, you know, just the value system that they had didn't match. And some people stayed, actually, some people stayed close even who didn't move in and ended up joining our meal club because we do two meals of, well, not during COVID, but we would do two meals a week. And there were people that that joined a meal club and came and ate with us. And they never did move in, but they were part of our original group. So, but we did a significant amount of outreach during those first couple of years. And and that wasn't the problem. Getting families interested was not the problem.
And that group photo that I showed, there was probably three households in that photo that actually never did live here, but we we know them and they come around pretty regularly. Not during COVID times, but so, yeah.
Other questions from commissioners?
This is Commissioner Howe. I have a question. I'm wondering in a in a vertical or urban model, how the community spaces would function were in a downtown location with less community space that was outward looking?
Well, I can give you an example of the one that I was actually looking at in the very early early feasibility phases, there was a there was, there was a concept of having, you know, a four story terraced building, so it stepped back. Everybody had had a small terrace that looked out into the center core that was common. There was a common area and a big deck above the parking, so that would be on the second floor that had a reasonable amount of light hitting it because the way the building stepped back and it was open to the to the south. And and then the idea would be to probably have an elevator so that it could also meet the people that they aged and could be ADA accessible. And and it would be urban, but the downtown of of Sebastopol is urban if you're going to put residents in it. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I think that sounds like it could be a lovely arrangement. And I know in New York City, there's many apartment buildings that are based around courtyards, which provide community space and also light into the unit. And my other question is, it sounds like it's financing for this traditional financing where each person finances their own portion of the development. So each person, you know, in the two acre wood, each person is financing one portion of the total construction and land cost. Is that correct?
When we first set it up, we created an LLC. So everybody became a member of the LLC when there was a buy-in to be able to to be able to build enough equity so that we get a commercial lender to come in. So we, we, I think we've got it in eighty twenty, you know, loan to value ratio, commercial loan on the on the construction loan. And then, once we were built, then everybody took out their own mortgage and we paid off the construction loan that way. So we were in, you know, we were all in bed together in a sense because we were all members of the same development corporation.
And then the low income units were priced, how did you structure the financing for the low income units? Did you receive monies from the state to offset that or?
The, that was, the, the city of Sebastopol had a redevelopment agency at the time. So they funded a silent second and the, what was it? Well, Burbank Housing was the third party that 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 managed that. I assume they still do because those those two properties are still under that.
Well, I think, the way I think that worked, Burbank helped draft the documents. The city holds the deed restriction, city of Sebastopol. And should one of those households decide to sell, the city, I think, this is the way Burbank normally structures this with their properties. The city can go wherever they want to administer their affordable housing program and they may, they used to have a sort of an agreement with Burbank Housing and they may still, I I retired from Burbank a few years ago, so I'm not up to date. But so the city could go, you know, with whoever, you know, to administer that sale. And there's probably terms around first right refusal and that sort of thing in order to assure that the, that those homes stay in the in the affordable inventory and continue to count toward affordable numbers for the city.
But if those, if when the sale, the city will get their silent second back. I believe.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question as far as, is there a lot of, how's the turnover in families? And then I would imagine it's kind of a careful consideration both ways. I mean, someone coming in to buy a house has to kind of keep in mind it's kind of a closer community versus, you know, buying into a neighborhood is an example, where you might have a little bit more more privacy. How does that work?
It is something you have to be a little careful about from both sides of it. One is you, you want to make sure a new buyer understands what's going on. And so as part of the disclosure for the sale request that the seller, well, the seller is required, of course, to disclose not only the CCRs and so on that are, but those are pretty boilerplate, but also the agreements. You know, through the years of community meetings, we've come up with a lot of agreements about things like how often we cook and where we park and you know, how how we can and cannot use the common house and all these things. And so the expectation is that the buyer kind of self selects by spending time with that. It's very easy and risky to fall afoul of real estate, you know, fair, fair housing rules. So you have to be pretty careful around that. And you, you can't, you know, you can't pick and choose just based on who you think you'll like necessarily because that is very undefendable if something should go to court there. So you really have to, you know, have a a sale process that looks pretty normal on the surface and then hope that the households that are looking at that to purchase that home, do it with the open eyes and understand what they're getting into. And we try to do things to make that easy so that, you know, prospective buyers, we had one house sell here within the last six months. And we try to make sure the prospective buyers have a good idea of, you know, how often we meet and what the expectations are of participation and that sort of thing.
Thank you. Look, we have any other questions? Not, curious, is this something we generally open for public comment or is this just more informational?
So I would, I think there may be folks here who have questions for that, so we would traditionally open it to public comment.
So I will open for public comment and just that if you, if you have questions, you can address those questions and then we will answer them at the end, just the way that these meetings are supposed to be run. It's not really set up to go back and forth. So you have two minutes, you can have three minutes and neither make a comment or if you have a question, we'll make sure that your question is addressed whenever all the public comments are done. All right, so if you need to go ahead and raise your hand or virtually or physically.
And you can also, if you don't know how to do either of those, use the chat function to let us know that you'd like to ask a question or make a comment. And Chair Fernandez, I did not receive any written communications on this item.
Okay, thank you. Don't see any write at this point. Okay, great. Well, that means that you guys thoroughly covered all the subject very well. So I really appreciate you guys taking time out to to be here and kind of educate us on on that process and appreciate the insight and hopefully something to think about.
And I do want to note, one thing is that while our planning commission videos are available on YouTube through the city's website, we are hoping to actually extract the presentations on these housing topics and put them on our planning website under housing. We have a housing resources section. And so Tom and Michael, if you're okay with that, we would like to be able to do that with this and the next presentations.
Sure, yeah.
You will be gaining royalty rights, but
Or big, big consulting fees, hopefully not.
Great. Well, thank you again. Appreciate you guys being here and taking the time to go through that. And thank you to Kate for setting this up along with the other series that are coming up. Thank you, Kate, for that. Commissioner Howe. So, okay, so we will move on to agenda item number seven. This is an alcohol use permit for Fern Barn, six, seven, eight, zero Depot Street, Suite one twenty. And this is a use permit application submitted by Lowell Sheldon, requesting approval to expand the Fern Bar by incorporating six, seven, eight, zero Depot Street, Suite one forty, a twenty three hundred square foot space, which is intended to be used for events such as weddings, receptions, corporate catering, dance parties and music. Suite one forty was previously occupied by Scout, a retail clothing store, which vacated the site in two thousand twenty. A use permit is required because the existing restaurant is substantially increasing their square footage. And turn that over to our planning director.
All right. Thank you, Everett. That was a good introduction. So good evening, planning commissioners. So I'm, I'm going to repeat a little bit what Everett said just there. But the project before is an alcohol use permit amendment for the Fern Bar, currently located at sixty seven eighty Depot Street, Suites one twenty and one thirty, or portions of one thirty, and they're requesting to expand into Suite one forty. So the zoning permits restaurants in the commercial manufacturing zone, the CM zone, when alcohol is involved, an alcohol use permit is required. And in this case, since the building is expanding by roughly seventy five percent, or the tenants basically expanding by roughly seventy five percent, a alcohol use permit amendment is required to kind of capture that into memorialize it. And also to essentially let the planning commission look at it again and see if there's any additional conditions of approval they would like to apply to it. So a little bit of background was that the Fern Bar received their use permit back in two, early two thousand eighteen. And the use permit approved a type seventy five, you know, ABC license, which allows the sale of beer, wine, distilled spirits and limited brewing. Approved for approximately three thousand square feet, approximately one hundred indoor seats, amplified music and operation from eleven AM to two AM, you know, seven days a week. For this project, you know, the proposals were remaining substantially the same. But the space utilized is increasing by twenty three hundred square feet, or as I said earlier, roughly seventy five percent increase, which is why the amendments are part. The applicant had initially requested the space be utilized solely for special events such as wedding receptions, corporate catering, dance parties and live music. But during further review and discussion, staff recommended to the applicant that space could be utilized as general seating, given that restaurants are allowed use and essentially the primary use is a restaurant for this, for this tenant. And wouldn't, you know, it's premature. So overall, staff recommends approval of alcohol use permit as it does not appear to be detrimental and that there are already a variety of restaurants, wine tasting rooms, breweries, distilleries at this location. Essentially, this is just a expansion of the existing use that's currently there. The conditions of approval for the planning department have remained pretty much the same. But environmental health, building and fire had decided a couple of additional kind of standard conditions as well. So those have been incorporated into the use permit. So that would conclude my staff report. If the commission has any questions of me, I'm happy to answer them. And I've been sent the applicant a couple of emails, but I don't see them in our participants list. And I've been, sent the applicant a couple of emails, but I don't see them in our participants list. But, um, it may be here and it may just be of, you know, the name may be incorrect, but that concludes my report.
Okay. Start with the questions to staff, uh, any commissioners have on this, uh, proposal. Yeah, go ahead.
So there's a few conditions that came, it looks like from the building department in particular that, I don't know. I mean, I appreciate, I guess, what they're trying to say, but in some ways they just seem like extraneous, um, conditions because they're just requirements anyway. Um, for example, like condition 23 says the building has to comply with the building code, basically. I mean, it's construction that has to comply with the building code. Now, do we really need that as a condition? Um, and then 24 is how many sets of drawings need to be submitted? I mean, does that need to be a condition of approval? I mean, when you go to submit a set of drawings for approval, you contact the city and say, how many sets do you need? And they, and then you provide them. It just seems like a kind of, it, it doesn't seem like it's necessarily specific to this project. They need to comply with the special condition kind of thing. Um, the next 125 talks about accessibility. Again, that's just, that's a building code requirement. I mean, we're not listing every other building code requirements in the conditions of approval. Why do we list this one specific condition that's a building code requirement? Um, and then another one. And then even if we do, um, think we need all those requirements, 20, uh, condition 26 has something, and then I think there's, it, it talks about authorized construction hours. And then item B, Roman numeral two, again, talks about the accessibility requirements. Um, which again, I don't think we definitely don't need it in there twice. I question whether we need it once. Um, and then condition 28 talks about needing to comply with COVID requirements. I'm assuming that's going to be a limited thing and it's not going to be something that's lasting forever. And again, it's just kind of a general requirement for doing business at this time. The businesses have to comply with COVID requirements. Does it need to be a condition of approval for this project? You know, COVID hopefully will be over, you know, these limitations will be over this year hopefully. And then we still have this condition of approval in here that doesn't really mean anything. Um, and then condition 29, um, my question about that. I'm not quite sure what condition 29 is even saying, I guess, is my, I'm not sure what that means.
Apologies for 29. I, I should specify that. I came from the health department and it was requested for, essentially 28 through 30 was requested by the health department to be included as part of the conditions of approval.
So you're saying we can't change those? Is that what you're saying?
So in my prior experience, what I was always told was, um, you know, building, fire, outside agency departments, if they request them to be conditions of approval, those are their conditions of approval. And we can, you know, clean them up or tweak them as long as the intent is still the same, but we should, if they're requesting to be added to the conditions, it's their request and their requirement.
All right.
Yeah. And Vice Chair Fritz, one of the things that I can note, um, that sometimes our conditions of approval may seem obvious to, to an architect or someone like you, but it, um, oftentimes they are helpful for an applicant when the applicant isn't a design professional to, um, for them to understand what, you know, and, and it's sort of a heads up that, you know, you like for accessibility, a lot of, um, business owners don't realize that if they do a construction project, they may have to upgrade other parts of their building that they will not expect them to do. And so some of it is a little bit advisory, I agree. Um, but he's, uh, we're trying to pull out the, um, sort of highlight the big, um, things that applicants may not be aware of. And, and the COVID, actually, we've actually made that a fairly standard condition I've seen from environmental health. Um, and we've actually done that with use permits as well, so that there's a very clear understanding of what the expectation is regarding that.
Are any of those conditions ones that you would agree or not have a problem with, uh, removing as Vice Chair Fritz had mentioned?
Well, certainly the duplication. Um, you know, I don't, the, certainly the number of sets of plans, that's, that's clearly advisory. Um, it will be required for a building, it's not a conditional, um, of, uh, you know, for, I mean, it actually says right there for the building permits, so this will be required. So that's, uh, advisory that could certainly be removed. Um, I do think it's helpful to note the year of the codes. Um, but, uh, and I will note actually that the, uh, the city staff and departments were actually working on a list of standard conditions of approval that might include some of this stuff to be a separate exhibit. So you don't have to wade through and look at, well, which ones are just the standard indemnification and time limits and building code kind of things. Um, you, you can look at once and then know that that's there. You'll instead get a list, you know, you'll get two, two exhibits. One will be those and one will be the specific conditions that really do relate to the specifics of that project or use.
One, one concern I would have about condition 23 and actually putting the date of the building code in it is that, you know, if, if it's, they don't pull a, you know, and this was work, we kind of just transitioned a year ago to a new building permit, but they get updated every three years. So if this was like near the end of a code cycle and we put the, you know, or even a year away, you know, if they didn't pull a building permit or apply for a building permit and then the code cycle changed, but they, they might think that they get to comply with the old building code, which would not be the case. So.
Right. Right. And so Vice Chair Fritz, I would actually for that, um, the way I have written that condition in the past, we can talk to our building official about this, but I'd be comfortable tonight saying conformance with the current, um, you know, current, those are the codes in, in effect at the time of building permit application.
Yeah, I think that.
That way, it's, that's why it is clear that if it's in the next code cycle, whenever you submit your building permit, that's when, because I have seen communities do it both ways. Some do it when the entitlement is granted, um, if they have a very complex and require really detailed plans that require, you know, all the egress to be worked out because that was a big change a few years ago.
Yeah. So I think that would be better to make it, you know, the current building code rather than the specific year because I think that could be confusing to some, at some points in time.
Okay.
And when are we going to do electronic submittals? Why are we still submitting paper copies anyway?
We are actually allowing the option to applicants.
Oh, is that?
Some people don't know that capability, but we, we are accepting electronic submittals for most things unless there's a need, you know, very complicated, complex project that has a lot of drawn sheets.
That's good to know. That's great. So I know a lot of other jurisdictions are going to, um, electronic and it's, I love it actually. It's great.
Uh, questions?
That's all my questions. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Uh, there are questions from commissioners? Um, I, I went on condition 18, which says the business owner shall be responsible for removing any graffiti on the outside of the restaurant. Um, don't we have a, uh, graffiti ordinance? Isn't it, isn't there like a certain timeline that it should be removed by or, or should that be added to this one? I thought I remember something about a timeline before.
Let me check real quick. I think you may be correct. Um, I'm only seeing it for cell towers at this time. Wireless communication. He has one mentions of graffiti. So you're specifically related to those, to cell towers.
And what's the timeline on that one?
Let's see. Give me one second here.
And Chair Fernandez, I think actually this has come up before and we've made the condition of approval state the same timeframe that Alan is looking up right now as a, as a good standard. That's why, that's why you're thinking it's in the code because I remember recalling you asking for that previous, on the previous application. And I will note, just, um, as a point of information, our police department does regularly, uh, when they get reports of vandalism from someone, um, does notify business owners so that they're aware of it. And sometimes they're necessarily aware of it. Certainly in these circumstances, if they're not there.
Right. And of course it benefits them to get rid of as soon as possible as well, but just to, just to be clear, you know, clear on, on that.
Yeah. And I do know the bile office is very, but it has always been very attentive to that, uh, with their properties.
Because it encourages other graffiti if it's not removed within a period of time.
Yeah. So I'm not seeing it specifically mentioned in that chapter, but let me see if I can pull up some of the, I think I know what use permit you're referring to. I'm going to try to pull that up.
Yeah. We can, uh, you know, continue on with, if the, if there's a representative here from the applicant, uh, would like to make a comment presentation, we can, we can go to that and then come back uh, to that information if that's okay, kind of move things along.
Sure. And I don't believe we have a representative from the applicant team here tonight. Could we, Alan?
Um, I don't want to put Jennifer on the spot, but I believe she's a representative property owner. I'm not sure if she has a presentation or not, but just, uh, putting that out there. Hey, Jennifer.
Hi there. Yeah, I don't have anything. I wasn't here to present. I was just here to support and listen. I anticipated Lowell would be on the call, but, um, yeah, so I, I didn't have anything to present. Um, sorry about that.
That's all good. Just checking in.
Thank you.
The commissions may have, may have some questions on that. Uh, for the record, I did speak to, to Lowell, um, as I had some questions for him. And one of the questions I had was with the issue of making sure that food is provided throughout the hour, uh, hours of operation and how would that work based on the fact that it was an event? And he said that the restaurant would be providing the food and that, uh, he, uh, makes sure that snacks or on a limited basis menu is available the entire time that alcohol is being served. So. With that information.
All right. Thank you. And, uh, just to follow up, Carrie had found the code section referring to how long, how long graffiti, or how quickly graffiti should be removed and it's within 48 hours.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to add that on there. That's acceptable. And so I will bring it back, uh, and open it up for, well, actually, yeah, I'll open up for public comment and then commissioners have questions, uh, or further comments. We can kind of go in that direction. So go ahead and open it for a public comment.
All right. I'm looking, uh, at numbers in the public and the chat. Um, I do not see any, uh, we have a couple of moments in the public, but I don't see any comment. Yeah. And Alan, did we receive any written comments on this?
Not received any written comments.
Um, so I'll go ahead, close public comment and bring it back to the commission for any, uh, discussion or questions, uh, additional that, that there may be.
I move that we approve the use permit. Um, with condition, uh, 18 being modified to add the, uh, you know, 48 hours graffiti must be cleared within the 48 hours. Um, the recommendation that the, a year of the building code be removed and we do, you know, per the current, you know, building code in effect at the time of, uh, permit application. Um, I'd like to add if, if we are accepting, um, electronic submittals to condition 24, um, or electronically, that's acceptable. And then, um, getting rid of the, you know, Roman numeral two and item 26. So we're not double, doubling that, uh, accessibility requirement.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
I make one quick comment. Sorry.
Sure.
Um, for the digital submittals and maybe Carrie can touch on this. I think the number 24 that you referred to, Paul, was for the building permits to middle. And I'm not sure the building department is accepting, or I think they're selectively selecting electronics submittals depending on the scale of the project. I don't want to.
Right. So Alan, I think i- if we can just add, um, if, if feasible or if possible to that, though. We'll call it that. If it's, if it's not something the building department can handle, then.
Maybe as, as allowed by the building department or something, you know, and.
Yeah.
Allowed by the building department.
Yeah.
After all that, I'm good with that modification as well. And if there's no further discussion, we can go, uh, roll call.
All right. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Lynn Bush.
Aye.
Commissioner How.
Aye.
Commissioner Ottinger.
Aye.
Vice Chair Fritz.
Aye.
And Chair Fernandez.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously, excuse me, unanimously, six, zero.
Okay. Great. Well, that's good because we, we don't want to have any ties today. Okay. Um, all right. Moving on to item number eight, subcommittee updates. And I know that the park subcommittee is, I think, has at least an update in this, if anyone else has one as well. At your cape, if you guys want to chime in.
I'm actually trying to open my document here. Yeah, I'll just say that, um, our parks committee had, um, a nice surprise in that Public Works managed to take care of some of the things on our list. So we'll need to meet again and decide what's left and see if there's something that we can turn into a workday. But among the things that Public Works did for us was they took down the two to not, do not feed signs. In the process, they also cleaned out the whole area and it just looked beautiful in the morning I was there. And once I saw that the signs were gone and you just get the, your eye just passes through the area without stopping on this ugly thing. So it was really beautiful. Because they had done that, I went down to, toward the bollards on the, uh, east end and noticed that they had also been mostly straightened and painted and refreshed and that the unreadable signs had been removed along with the ugly post holding it and that new trash cans were placed there. So when you went to the park from the east now, it, it, it looks very welcoming and it's a very nice thought. I, I did, along with other communications, I think, Dante for that work. Um, I've been in communication with, um, uh, regarding the stage with Jim Corbett and it looks like he has enough energy with his various foundations and contractor friends and volunteers from the Love Choir and Peaceton that they can probably go ahead with their, um, repairs of the stage. But I was taking a yoga course with a woman who's giving free lessons on the stage. I noticed there's a lot of moss growing between the, um, the trek decking or whatever non-wood surface that is. So I thought that if we could, um, add to our list of things to ask Dante to take care of, or maybe turn into a workday would be to power wash the stage now. Um, or as soon as the pine pollen has left us. So that should be coming up pretty soon. Um, I think that's about it for my report unless Kate, you wanted to talk about anything else?
Well, I just wanted to say that Commissioner Ottinger had prepared a lovely, um, document to, we're hoping to present to the Public Arts Committee regarding a, a potential mural uh, around Ives Park Pool and that, um, we're hoping to get on their calendar to present at some point in the future to see if they're interested in that project. And that Commissioner Ottinger had really created a very detailed, um, and complete document that we're hoping to present and get support for from the Public Arts Committee. And I think we're very pleased with the progress that we've made and the collaboration that we've had and experienced with, um, Director Swonstam and also the Public Works Department. I feel like it's been going extremely smoothly and that we're progressing, you know, much more rapidly than I would have initially imagined when we started meeting, I think in late November. So I'm very happy and I think if we continue forward that we will see and continue to see improvements in the. improvements in the park, um, and hopefully that will create enjoyment for everybody who accesses the park. And I just want to thank, uh, Commissioner Ottinger for her work on this. That's it, thank you.
Okay, yeah, what you guys have done is really fantastic, you know, you guys really focused and got a lot of items checked off and, uh, really appreciate, uh, you guys, uh, committee of two has really done the work of like five, so really appreciate everything you guys have put in there and everything you guys have lined up. It's, I mean, getting stuff done, it's just sometimes it sounds simple, but it's not, but you guys really helped it along, so thank you. And, and to Director Swannstam as well for helping out with that.
Yeah, and Carrie, can we get on the, I don't know how to get on the agenda for the Public Arts Committee meeting for next month early on? Is that something that you can do?
Well, um, I can look at the agenda, I know it's actually pretty packed right now, but let me, let me see if I can, um, talk to the chair about that. The chair of that committee about that.
I, I could, um, attend the meeting very quickly and supply the documents. I wanted to create a short statement saying that we really are looking at the west wall for now, not the, um, the, the south wall. But I could do it as public comment at the beginning of the meeting since it isn't officially, um, itemized, um, meeting agenda.
Yeah, we can, we can discuss, I think it'd be good for it to be a regular agenda item. And let me see if I can juggle that, their agenda a little bit with their chair to get you on.
Okay, then I'll add that little statement to those documents so that you have that, you submit it all. I don't know how to put it all into one PDF, but maybe you do.
If you send us several PDFs, we will be able to combine them into one, that's not a problem, yeah.
Above my pay grade.
Okay, um, any other questions for the commissioners, the comments?
Thank you. Glad, glad there's some progress.
Yep.
I also attended the Zero Waste Sub, uh, Committee Meeting, my, my first one. I, and I, it's gonna be a long learning curve for me, but they're working on a lot of things. Um, and I could probably report more concisely later, I have a few notes. But it, it is very interesting and they really are working on a lot of things and it's really so important that over time we just eliminate our waste stream and figure out how to do that in our own lives. So I'm appreciating the opportunity to rethink things. Um, of note, if you get the city's newsletter, you might have noticed the flyer for the webinars um, where you can ask questions of a recycling, um, expert, mostly through the ecology, um, business. And, um, there are, it's a Wednesday, I think, evening and Friday midday or the opposite. But if you look at the city's newsletter, it's a good opportunity to, um, ask questions if you have them. I know they always come up for me and it's nice to know that there's a time, you can just ask and get the question rather than spending an hour or two searching the, the website or something like that.
Any other committee reports, or?
Yeah, I have a climate action committee report. I just, I just want to say thank you Kathy for stepping up, uh, to be part of the Zero Waste Subcommittee and, uh, really glad that that work is getting back underway. Um, update from the, the Climate Action Committee, uh, one is that, uh, our, our first resolution as a committee was to endorse Climate Safe California, an initiative to, uh, have net negative carbon emissions by twenty thirty. That's largely been spearheaded by the Climate Center out of Santa Rosa, um, uh, formerly the Center for Climate Protection. And, uh, we were actually the, so the city council passed that and we were the first municipality in the county to support Climate Safe California. So, uh, the council was really excited about that and we were as well. Uh, as I mentioned in our last meeting, uh, we have our, uh, subcommittees on the Climate Action Committee underway now and we'll be having our first report backs on that at our meeting tomorrow at three thirty. Uh, so really excited about that, uh, and what our working groups, um, will be able to accomplish to, uh, maximize the effort of the committee and also bring other members of the community into those working groups uh, to really tackle some of the specific areas in the Climate Action Plan and other areas that we're working on. Uh, so happy to answer any questions, uh, that may arise. But once again, things are just getting underway and the work's just getting started and we are a standing committee. So, uh, the work will hopefully, uh, continue for as long as it needs to.
And if, uh, member of the public want to attend the meeting, what's the best way to find out the information?
City of Sebastopol website, uh, everything is, is noticed there with the Zoom information, uh, just as our meetings are.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and for that, there's a couple of different ways to find that link. One is to go to, right in the middle of the page, there's a meetings tab, um, and there's also a calendar tab, which, if you know the date of the meetings, uh, where you can go there and it's a color-coded calendar that shows when the climate action. Uh, and I believe the Zero Waste, uh, Committee meetings as well, uh, when those are happening. And just like the Planning Commission meetings, if you click on that link, you'll get a link to the meeting and their agenda.
Okay, yeah, and Luke, thank you for, uh, being part of that and representing our commission.
Absolutely.
Okay. Uh, I guess we'll have any more, move on to Planning Director's report.
Thank you Chair Fernandez, um, so I have some meeting updates and I actually had a couple of park updates and since we had a park, uh, Ives Park, uh, Subcommittee Update, I'll, I'll start with those. Uh, the first is, um, an update on the schedule for Ives Park Sculpture Garden. Uh, the, uh, agreement with the county is being signed, uh, either this week or next. And so that allows us to encourage on, um, air, we use the, utilize the full area between the Center for the Arts Parking Lot and the pathway in Ives Park. Um, and, um, I've already coordinated with Dante and it looks like he's, uh, he's coordinating his crews to, for the paths, uh, for the sculptures in probably about six or eight weeks, so you'll see those in place. The, uh, the Public Art Committee has finalized the call for artists on that, other than the couple of dates of the, um, uh, when it'll be released and it'll be open for a certain amount of time. Uh, the, uh, they want the paths to be there so that the artists can see where the sites are um, as they're proposing and submitting their sculptures, so, um, we're waiting a little bit before releasing the, the call for artists, but that will be coming up soon, uh, we posted in our city newsletter and, um, our PAC is coordinating with a bunch of art, uh, different art groups and, um, schools to get the word out about this. But if anyone on the commission has any ideas for good groups of folks or places to advertise that, um, in the community, uh, that would be, uh, excellent if you could just email myself, uh, I'd appreciate that. Um, the other perk update we have is that, uh, Libby Park, uh, Super Playground, which was completed, uh, a few months back. Uh, during, I think, midsummer actually is when it was completed. Uh, we were actually able to do a, uh, small ribbon cutting ceremony, uh, the mayor did, um, at the site last Thursday, that was on our YouTube, um, channel, so it's available there. If you, uh, and Facebook Live, I think, was the other format. Uh, so one of the events that we're actually having with that, um, is a slow cat, uh, treasure hunt and Kathy, I saw the beautiful Luma Husk on the slow cat, it was great. Thank you so much for your sewing capabilities. Uh, the, uh, so the slow cat is down at Libby, uh, Libby Park, right outside of Libby Park right now. Um, and, uh, we're having a treasure hunt of, um, and it is COVID safe because there are a bunch of stickers that will be placed, uh, I believe, Thursday, um, so that it'll start on Friday, uh, all throughout the park and the playground as well as throughout the park and, uh, but maybe maps available at City Hall as well as the city's website, uh, people can, uh, children and their families can print out, go through the park and do a bunch of, uh, see how many they can find. Uh, we're actually gonna have, um, trophies that are being made by Patrick Amiop as the awards for three different age categories, so I think it'll be a lot of fun. Um, and definitely if you know, um, uh, kids particularly in the, you know, four to twelve or thirteen age group, um, which the, the playground is actually meant for, uh, kids five through twelve, so. But there are some accessible, there's an accessible, uh, swing that works for, um, all ages as well as families, people with disabilities as well as, um, you know, members of their family as a, as a communal thing, if you will. It, uh, seats, uh, more than one person, so they can be used. And that's one of the, one of the brand new pieces that's out there. The other set of updates I have is, uh, the various meetings going on in the city um, and that may have, and, and items that may be of interest to the commission. Uh, as, uh, Commissioner Lynn Bush noted, the last city council meeting, uh, the council adopted a resolution endorsing the Climate Safe California platform. Um, they also approved the Benedict Car Wash with, uh, some additional conditions. And other, Planning Commission had recommended denial. Um, you may have, uh, you probably all reviewed how the, the conditions of approval from, um, last October when you first saw that project, uh, the council had some additional, um, conditions that they added to that. Uh, generally, uh, to try to enhance landscaping on both the south side, um, and the east side of the, of the car wash area, um, addressing, uh, noise concerns, addressing water, overspray concerns. Uh, and also, um, ensuring that we are gonna, uh, we will be getting a five-foot easement on the south side of that property for a sidewalk uh, so that Abbott Avenue could be extended to serve some of those properties, including the Sebastopol end, which is now, um, this, I'm sure you're all aware. Um, going to be housing, um, supportive housing. And so that was the last meeting, uh, upcoming city council meetings, there is a special meeting tomorrow morning starting at eight thirty, uh, for city council and that will be, uh, commission and follow-up to some of their surveys and some of their work. Uh, the next regular city council meeting on March sixteenth, which is next Tuesday, we'll have the Planning Commission composition recommendations from its body. Um, Chair Fernandez will be our liaison, um, Planning Commission liaison for that. Um, and then, uh, the Development Impact Feast, uh, public hearing is actually scheduled, tentatively scheduled for the, uh, April sixth, uh, city council meeting. And so they're the next couple of meetings for council. Uh, and then lastly, the Design Review Board, um, met last, uh, Wednesday and they approved a oxygen tank, um, installation in the parking lot. It's no specialty hospital, they did require some additional fencing and screening for that project. Um, it will be in their parking lot, so you may see that, um, in the coming weeks. Um, and, uh, at their next meeting on next Wednesday, they will have, uh, be reviewing two facade improvement, uh, grant applications. So, a few things going on in the city, a little bit busy. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, on these or other topics.
Um, so regarding the car wash, um, conversation with Vice Chair Fritz regarding, uh, revisiting the commercial use table specifically seventeen point two-five dash one. I know, if Paul, you want to make any comments on that and, uh, see how we might want to address that or, uh, you know, for future consideration.
Yeah, I would, I just would like to, you know, agendize the discussion of that table because I, I think there is a conflict in that, um, you know, the auto use. How, how does it determine? The automotive repair and service versus automotive sales, service and repair. Um, you know, those two items were all confusing and, and I know, I mean, I don't care, you weren't here when we did the zoning code update and talked about this table, but it was fairly clear in my mind that when we talked about this, we were trying to keep automotive uses out of downtown, so. I actually think the automotive repair and service line is correct one. Um, but anyway, I think that should be brought back and, I think we should discuss how to fix that, um, confusion now that's in that table. So I don't know how we get that, you know, agendized for a future meeting, but I think that would be helpful.
Okay, and, um, I will note, um, thank you Vice Chair Fritz. On that note, uh, I'll work with the chair to look at an agenda for that. Um, there are a couple of other, uh, pieces on the table that also need updating. Uh, one, uh, the one that I know of is that the city now has a tobacco lease retail license. Uh, city council passed and the effect of that is that tobacco and smoke shops, vape shops are no longer permitted. Um, as a concentrated, you know, as opposed to being a component of a large, of a different use. Uh, and so we do allow those with the conditional use permit for that table in the general commercial zone right now. But it would not be consistent with that ordinance and so that should just be, uh, and I would, I would leave the smoke shop line definition in there, but just know that it's just like drive-throughs. Uh, not that it's not permitted in town, so. Uh, and then the other piece of it, um, I, I don't know where this is going, but, um, most of you probably heard that Pedalumo became the first city in the C U S to ban new gas stations, uh, within the city. Um, I, I do believe that that might be something that the climate, uh, one of the climate committees might be taking up soon. Um, or talking about, I know there's, I'm just from the, this one council member that, um, uh, I spoke with on that, so, uh, who's on that committee, so I don't know where that's going. Um, but if, that, you know, right now it's in our table, it's a conditional use, so the city certainly has the ability to say no to any new, uh, gas stations. Um, I think it would be helpful if that, if something like that does happen to also understand how to treat existing gas stations in that way, um, because they are certainly, uh, while there's a sustainability aspect, they also provide a, uh, certain level of revenues to the gas tax that, um, this, and your council would want to discuss.
Yeah, and if there's any, you know, maybe it might be a time to review any other inconsistencies that we might want to just address, uh, if not, we can just, you know, handle those, but, uh, you know, and then are gonna be maybe too, too, uh, too big, you know, maybe just kind of some language, those types of things, so it might be an opportunity to look at other things as well. You have anything on that, okay? Um, any other questions on the reports?
I just had a question, I was wondering where the, um, I didn't stay for the whole meeting, but the conversation about the Ned Khan sculpture location, where, where does that stand and what's going on?
Thank you, um, I actually, that's the other committee. The, uh, so Ned Khan presented his, both his sculpture concept and the proposed, uh, uh, the public workstation, uh, Public Works courtyard, um, on Morrison Johnson, um, at, a couple of meetings ago to the city council, the city council loved the idea and improved the sculpture. They wanted to look for, they did want us to look at alternative sites that were a little bit more prominent in town. Um, our PAC, Public Art Committee actually discussed and reviewed this, um, uh, given their, they've been, most of them have actually been through two more years of this process, um, for this particular sculpture than I have. So, they had a lot more institutional memory, uh, than I do and so this is not on this. Um, and many of those sites had actually been reviewed and, and didn't work for those reasons. However, um, the PAC at their last meeting, uh, after discussion and, and talking with, um, the potential to put it, um, on, uh, city property, either where the AmeriCorps Trail is going, which is just northwest of the bridge, outside of Calcan's right-of-way, but northwest, this is where the Welcome to City of Sebastopol sign is. Uh, or somewhere on Tamagotchi Park, um, there's two sections of that one. The east side of the driveway in, uh, Depart Village and Tamagotchi Park is under conservation easement by Egg and Open Space. Um, and the west, but the west side, uh, was, uh, the triangle area at the front of the property is part of Tamagotchi Park, um, but is not under conservation easement, it does have some what-ones there, so there's, um, some considerations there. And so at our last meeting, uh, the PAC actually, uh, recommended any of those sites and so that it doesn't need to go back to them, they felt that those were appropriate to move forward. Um, and, uh, Ned Khan and Egg and Open Space and Councilman were hitting the line that last Thursday at the site. Uh, and it looks like the best probability of that will be the northwest side. Um, but it, we, we looked at a couple of different options, um, either on the north or south side of, uh, and west side of the bridge. So, fingers crossed that will, one of those locations will work out.
Yeah, that is much better than the Corporation Yard, either of those, I think.
Yeah, and I think it's consistent with how both our Public Art Committee, which wants art at the entries to town sees it and obviously will council have eventually approved.
Alright, thank you.
And, or, uh, March twenty-third meeting coming up, any, uh, anticipating? And, or, March twenty-third meeting coming up, any anticipating items there?
I believe we have a use permit amendment, so we don't have anything else at this point scheduled. If we do, I will certainly let you know, but otherwise we will have a meeting, but at this point we don't have one item.
Anything else for commission consideration? Good at your order. Thank you everyone for your participation as usual and for your time. And so I will officially join this meeting until the next time we get together. And thanks again for everyone with all the work that they're doing. So really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, y'all.
And Carrie, you got anything we need to go over?